Okay, people are joining us. I'm gonna give it a minute to allow everyone to join us. And Jill, if you could give me a sign when you think everyone's in?
It looks like we have everyone.
Okay. Calling this regular school board meeting of the Menage School District to order. And please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we dive into the agenda, I wanted to thank you all for your patience. We had an executive session at six that went a little longer than we planned. So, thank you for your patience and holding on long enough to join us. So, that said, if anybody is interested in talking to the board, we do have that opportunity as item seven on our agenda, public forum. And so, we would ask that you sign up through the chat and let Jill know that you would like to address the board. And just for your awareness, that agenda item happens after the board member reports. So, that would clue you in that if you have signed up, we would be ready to listen to you. And remember, that's limited to three minutes. And we don't have any visitors, but I'm aware of. Any announcements for the good of the order?
No.
All right. Moving on to presentations. So, we have Kevin Muffett with our sports activities calendar.
You're muted, Kevin.
Better?
Yeah. Do you need to share a screen? Do you need to share a screen or anything, Kevin?
I will in a few minutes here, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The thanks board and admin team for having me. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the athletic plan to try and get in place for next week that we discussed at the last meeting that we were at. Does everybody have their, in the board packet? Can they follow along? Or do I need to share, do I need to share this screen? Because I can...
I think it'd be better if you could share along. It's a focal point, anyway.
Okay. And remind me how to share it, because I got two different things up.
Yeah, you'll have to open it and then click share. Open it in the background first.
Okay, I got it open in the background there. Now, I gotta redo it. Okay, I've got it. Do you see that? Is that Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, this is the first one. Then I'll get that second one up there. The, as we kind of talked about last meeting, trying to figure out ways that our kids back actively involved in a health and safety manner and get them excited to be coming back to school a little bit. I put the links here to Governor Brown's outlines for the season one activities. And there's a lot of documentation there, but you guys can peek at that. I want to talk about what we're doing kind of above and beyond what Kate, what Ms. Brown has asked. The, and before I kind of talk about this, Troy did a little research with me too. But right now, you know, there's 295 schools in the OSAA. They did a survey to see who's participating in this, this fall in the season one stuff. And 220 schools got back, so a decent number. But of those 220, 140 are participating in some way, shape, or form, whether it be workouts, contests, some are going a little further, like Eastern Oregon. You've probably seen it on the, on OSAA and in the papers or whatever, but they're playing full-blown seasons already. Don't want to go that route. But a lot of places are allowing for workouts and practices. And like I said last time, I totally understand either way. I just think it's the kids need to, need to start getting going a little bit, get back in shape and have some positive things to look, look at here. But the thing about that, those numbers, the 140 out of 220, the schools that aren't participating are like the Clackamas School District with Oregon City and the large districts in Eugene. And the fact is, those schools are participating. They're just not participating through the OSAA. They're all participating in club sports. I mean, Oregon City, they're coming down and playing in Fall Baseball Leagues. And Eugene's doing, they're, they're all playing. They're just, they're playing in a club setting. At Mount Angel, we just don't have that. We don't have the potential to do that. What happens is, you know, our volleyball kids are playing. Some of them, a select few, but those kids are quite, in a quite a bit better spot financially. And it's just not possible for all our kids to do that. So, we do have a few kids that are participating. But the club route, it's just not, it's not feasible for, for our student body, I don't think. If it was, that's a, that's a whole different discussion. But, you know, it might be about 10% of our kids that can do that. So, that's kind of my push to get this thing going. And so, our coaches are, are chomping at the bit. They put a lot of effort already into getting some guidelines set. And they've done a really nice job. Mrs. Coons, Mr. Ritchie, and Mr. Simmons have all, all been working hard. And I think they're, I think they've drawn up some plans to make sure the kids are safe and to get going. Look down that first, first page there. These are in addition to kind of the other things that we're gonna do. But I'll read through it quick. The, we'll follow all the season one guidelines, obviously. And then we're gonna go above and beyond because like you guys are. I'm worried about this too. And I want to be, I want to be better than the next door neighbors who, you know, aren't taking it as seriously and all that. But we're gonna contact Tracy. We're gonna check the kids when they come in. Any symptoms, any issues, gonna go home. And that, that'll be reported to the athletic director, then to the principal, then to the superintendent very quickly so that we can get a grasp on what's going on. These workouts are voluntary. Anyone who's not comfortable does not have to participate. It cannot impact. They're playing on a team during the school year. It's, it's like a summer program. Can't impact any of the decisions on who makes a team, who starts, who gets to play what position. That, that will not be part of the factor. All the implements and equipment will be disinfected on a regular basis. Like each student will be assigned their own equipment when possible. Like for us, baseball bats, that's gonna be all one kid or one kid per bat. They're not gonna change bats. Shot puts, discus, javelin, soft, we've talked about those. Social distancing, we're gonna maintain even when outside. And I don't have a problem if we're wearing masks full-time. None of my coaches do. If, if that's part of the puzzle, that's not a requirement by the OSAA. But I have no problem with that. And I don't think the kids will either. I think they would just be happy to get going. Coaches will wear face coverings regardless. Not much access to the bathrooms. They are open. I mean, we have to leave them open if a kid really does have to go. But we're gonna try and make it clear, go before you come. No locker room access. If the bathrooms are used, they'll be sanitized afterwards. School's not open, so it's gonna be all outdoors. Weight room, not available, not comfortable with that yet at all. And one thing that we didn't talk about last time is some of our kids have been doing some things, but a lot of them haven't. And our coaches are all in agreement that we use best practices when it comes to kind of slowly working kids back in. We're not gonna, we're not gonna bust their chops when they haven't been working out. We're gonna slowly build stamina, endurance, strength back up before we ask to do too much. If I scroll down here. A sec. Okay. These season one guidelines kind of showed you last time. And I changed it to the 21st. Now, it'd be the 28th, obviously. One thing I haven't done is kind of discussed if we would tweak those dates at the end. But for right now, we're just trying to get going, you know, to balance them out if we were to do that. But quite frankly, I just hoping the kids can get going and get into some things that, that ready to go there. And we talked about this last time, to complete the waiver, how to go on file, sports registration form, be a JFK student enrolled there. More of the, more of what we're gonna do entering the facilities. One thing that I didn't have on there, we're gonna stagger practice times so that you don't have same team showing up in the same area. To start with, we're gonna have a big stagger with baseball and cheer who don't enter or exit in the same area, starting at 3:30. Softball for track at 5:00, 5:30. And then we're gonna, so we're gonna have a big gap as this, as maybe next week, as it gets a little darker, we might go like 15-minute increments. But we'll make sure that we're not staying around. Kids are gonna show up right before they start, and they gotta go right afterwards. What they go do after that, we'll try to keep them separated. But I can't control all of that, but we're gonna try. More links if you want to check on that. Those are lengthy, but list of our coaches. And I have went through and added a few more for the outside protocol. I, I don't know if I need to run over all these, because I want to share a couple of the other team ones that Walt did. But this kind of goes over all that stuff. We're gonna maintain the six feet distance. We're gonna, you know, we'll wear the masks. We're gonna do all that stuff that we can to make sure the kids are, are being safe. It goes down to equipment and cleaning. We're gonna use clean solutions, spray bottles, towels to wipe down, which will wash nightly, sanitizing wipes. And probably the, some of the main ones that you're more concerned to with is preparation. Students bring their own water bottles. We're not gonna have drinking fountains. We're not gonna share water. That's not happening. We're not gonna be out of a Gatorade jug. Students keep their own belongings in their bags. They'll have kind of their own little area out at the fields. That's one nice thing about being outside. We can kind of, we can make the social distancing pretty easy. When it comes time for the gym activities, if that is a deal, I'll have a different set of standards for the gym, because obviously that'll incorporate a few more things. This is just for outside right now. Again, locker room's not available. Coaches track student groupings. And everything that we can do, we're gonna try and keep them away. That's the generalized ones. And then this is some extra. Can you see the softball ones there?
Yep.
Okay. Softball, Walt's, you know, taking it another step. And, and things that we talked about, like, we're gonna have kids play catch with the same person. That's their, that's their catch buddy for the duration of the fall. That limits the amount of people touching the same ball. I know that I'm gonna have two different buckets of balls for this group and that group. And then between uses, we're gonna sanitize this bucket and then work with these guys. You know, we're hoping that we can get each kid their own bat. I know baseball, we can. I think Walt's pretty close on that. And if not, they're gonna do heavy doses of sanitation. They're the only ones in this, the coaches are the only ones in the storage area. He's gonna do identifying marks, good idea, on the field where there'll be for stretching and for coach instruction to make sure that they, you know, can keep the, keep the social distancing. It's pretty good stuff here. And without going through the whole thing, I think you can see he's got it. We're gonna communicate it. The coaches have already been in communication with the players on, on these things. And Trax, Trax got his too. And you can see specific safety measures. He's gonna lay off the, the high jump and the pole vault type stuff, because that would be tough to keep sanitized. He's gonna stick with the events that are nice and easy to socially distance and, and sanitize equipment. No relays, no, no baton handing off and things like that. You can see how he's got the lane spacing here. If they're running shorter training distances, like 200 meters, it can be spaced every third lane. So, you can kind of do a mental picture there. That's more than six feet even, which is good. Two to three mandated strides if you're off-site, doing a little want longer one. Different stations around the field. Have the same, same business as all the other ones. So, I think that, I think we've got a good plan. And like I said, we, you know, we've taken what the governor's given us, and we've kind of expanded on it. And because, because I'm, safety's the number one thing for me, regardless of what we decide we're doing, obviously. And I, you know, we, we're gonna be the trendsetters. I like, I like to think of it this way. We've been, we've been the best in a lot of things lately. And I think that you, people kind of looking, a lot of people have called me saying, "What's Kennedy doing? What are you guys doing?" Because I think the, the idea is that we are so concerned about winning that we would go do anything to try to win. And we would be playing the most games and doing the most practices. And I'm like, no, that's not, that's not how we roll. We're gonna do what's safe for kids, number one. And, and I think we're a leader in that. I think people are looking up to us and how we're doing things. And I've shared some of these things with other schools. I've gotten stuff from other schools. I think, like I said, we're, we've been leaders in everything else. I, I think we should be leaders in the safety of our kids as well. So, I could, I can take some questions, I think, and hopefully answer them well.
Question, John Conklin. My question was, we had talked about the challenge for coaches to keep people six foot away from each other, that there'd have to be some support from administration or something else, assistance or something. Is that, is that part of a plan?
Yeah. There are, it is. Each, each sport, I think Coach Ritchie's got four people committed to help. Softball's got at least three, and baseball has four. So, I think that we have that pretty well covered. We're gonna be diligent about that. That's, there's no, like Mr. Stoops alluded to, if, if it can't be done, we're not, we're shutting it down, because we've gotta live up to that, so.
And then, Moth, this is Rod. I've got a few questions for you.
You bet.
How many, how many kids do you think you're gonna have participating?
That's a good question. I would say, and, and Coach Ritchie did a little survey. You know, we're not gonna have as many kids as we have in our regular spring seasons, I don't think. My guess would be 15 to 20 in track. Maybe the same in baseball and 10, 10 in softball, maybe. And then in cheer, I'd say 10. So, I would say, you know, in a regular spring season, we're talking about 40 in track, 25 in baseball, 65, 75. We're talking 90 in a regular spring season. I think we'll be at 45, 50 from what I've gathered so far.
The other season similar, do you think?
Yeah, you know, the, the fall with football would be a little bigger, I think. I would say they'd be closer to 40 in football, 20 volleyball, 60. I'd say majority of them. I'd, I'd say it'd be a little more in the second season, probably closer to 60.
Okay. Next question, the sports registration, is that the same as like the athletic contract?
Yes, yep.
So, they'd be under their athletic contract during this, this season? And then this one probably is gonna end up having to get bumped to Troy. But you talked about case reporting and that going up through the administration for contact tracing and stuff. How does that get transmitted to the community?
The, the forms?
No, how does, like, if we have a outbreak, or, and I suppose this is for Troy. You know, if we have a problem, how do, how do we, how do we communicate that?
Yeah, that one, I, I might have to ask him on that one.
Right, we would, the, the process is communicating with the, with those cohorts that are impacted.
But no, there, there's, there's not like a general community thing or anything like that?
No, the, the requirements are reporting to those who are impacted. Yeah. And then, of course, we would, we would share out as a district, you know, but it wouldn't be something that we would share out immediately. We would be, work, work with those families directly. And then, of course, I would give the board a report in each, in each board meeting if we had incidents.
Okay. Thank you.
And John, you had another question?
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody else have?
I have one more. Just to clarify, when we talk about outdoor facilities, I know that we're talking about the fields. But do we also include dugouts, ranch stands, batting cages, covered area? Are those all considered outdoor?
Yeah, and I, I think that we'll probably try to keep kids out of as many of those as possible. At least, I mean, yes, I would consider them outdoor, but we'll have to stay socially distanced in there too.
And that, okay.
Yeah. Good question.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hey, I appreciate you guys' time. And I'm, we're taking this extremely seriously, so appreciate you guys.
Thank you. All right. So, moving on to approving the agenda. So, we do have, we're gonna have Rod participate kind of be a co-responsibility for item 9.2. And materials were given to us a little last minute, so they'll be part of the minutes, but they're not gonna be shared beyond, the board got a copy of the materials. So, that's how we're gonna handle that last minute submission of materials. They'll be part of the minutes. So, anything else in the agenda, Troy?
Nope, it's, we, it's updated from last week, but we have all part of it.
So, I would feel the motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll move to approve it.
And John seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And consent items. Does anybody have anything they need to have pulled out of the consent items?
Nope, I can be sure that the, the request for leave, our policy, just as a reminder, is he's been employed as, as worked for our district for three consecutive years. We can, we can approve up to a full year's of absence for up to two employees that are at any given time in the district. That's the process. And I, I support this.
So, it's saying that if, does that, is that a total of two? Is that two, like, he needs half and I need half a year. Is that one?
Or, John, you're making this very difficult. It says, it says two employees. It doesn't say whether they're part-time or not. But I guess, you know, if we, if we want to, I think that would be the board would have.
I was trying to do math, like.
Yeah, that's why it was getting difficult.
It's two employees at one time. So, if you had, if you had two employees requesting three months off, this is my guess. And then two more employees three months later requesting two.
Thank you, Sherry.
I think it's two employees at any given time.
I think, according to policy anyway, it's, it's our guidance. It's actually not actually in policy. It's in our guidance, is, is two employees. It doesn't say full-time or part-time.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's just two employees at any given time. I think that's a good way to do it.
I don't think we've ever had, I don't think we've ever had two at any time, that's what I can think of. That's all I have.
I would feel the motion to approve the consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda. Okay.
Sure.
And John seconds. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Rod got a, got an aye. Thank you. Passes unanimously. Moving on to administrator reports.
Well, good evening, board members. I'm Dale Peterson. I'm up here, seems like up here, because you guys are down in a different position. That was just kind of cool. The September administrative board report, we're actually, we did a combined report again. And so, we're gonna just talk about some general areas. First of all, general information and the professional development we've been doing, our technology, where we're at with technology, special services, and then what's ahead. So, I'm not necessarily gonna read from the page itself, if that's okay, because there's a lot on here. But we've been awfully busy, oh, since March 13th, I would say. Lots of things going on. We've, we've always held our district mission and vision statements as near and dear to us. And whenever we're trying to make decisions, we always look to those, our values and beliefs, to be able to make those, those really difficult decisions. So, and then we're trying to connect those, or we are connecting those to our comprehensive distance learning process. Teachers have been super busy. First of all, taking priority standards down to what we call critical standards, the, the standards that must be taught. Those are the non-negotiables. And now, the last week or so, they've been curriculum mapping. So, what that means for, you know, the typical layperson, it means they're laying out their year. These are the lessons we're going to be teaching this week and then next week and the following week. And this is how we're gonna determine whether our kids have learned at the appropriate level and what do we have to do next if they haven't. So, those are the things they've been doing. Also, Google migration. So, we've been migrating away from our, our Outlook accounts to Google accounts. The elementary has been busy with some seesaw work that they've been doing. And of course, Edgenuity, which is our new online program. And it's also a program that we can actually have our kids that are credit deficient actually get into and, and are able to earn credits that way. So, technology canvases as of this morning. Canvas is still not yet available. And it's nobody's fault, so let's just kind of leave it at that. It's, they told us it was gonna be a six-week implementation process. And I think we're into week five. So, I received an email at the beginning of the board meeting from Scott May saying we're, we're closer. So, right now, you can say we're in, in a beta mode, if you will. Everybody's been put into this beta mode. And now, what has to happen, which is almost complete, Scott told me, which is the verification. And then they move into production, which means we actually have access to Canvas. So, I think we're close. But I, I talked to my staff last week, and I know Jared has as well. And then I also reinforced it this morning in our staff meetings. We're moving forward with, with Google Classroom, because we can't, we can't wait. We've got kids next Monday. And so, we have to go with a platform that we're familiar with. And we'll slowly implement Canvas when we can. I see possibly, you know, we might have to go through the entire first quarter with Google Classroom, which is fantastic, because our, our kids know it, our families know it, and our teachers know it. And then we can just slowly implement Canvas at the secondary level. Special services, holy cow, super busy there. 504s IAPs and tag plans have been, are, have been, are being reviewed by our case managers. And families will be contacted by either the counselor or the special education, case manager or teacher. They're gonna leave those plans as they are. And then they'll convene as a team virtually to make any necessary revisions. Hunger for plan, or should say hunger for special education and 504 training. Something that's brand new this year for us. And I appreciate that Erica Gordon went, went all out on this to get this for all of our staff. Anytime we're, we're able to better prepare ourselves with our, our students with special needs and their, their needs, as well as our 504 kids, that's a good thing. So, and that's what this, the hunger for special education and 504 training does for us. Limited in-person instruction. I know that, I believe Erica's gonna talk about that here when I'm done. And then, so what's ahead? We still have some COVID-19 training district-wide. This, this Wednesday and Thursday are special days for us, because we're actually conducting virtual home visits with our families. We know it's super important to, to connect with our families. We did a lot of that at the secondary level. I shouldn't say, we did the opposite of that with our, in the secondary level at the springtime. We connected a lot with our kids, but we didn't do so much with our families. So, we, we, we recognized that that was something that we needed to do. And so, we'll be doing that more often. And it's just asking questions, how are you doing? How, you know, how are the kids doing? Do they have a, a workspace that they can work in? Is there something you need from us, support from us? Things like that, that we can just create those connections. And then Canvas training, we'll, we'll get that in there at some point when we actually roll it out or when we, when we actually get access to it. And then, holy cow, school starts Monday, September 28th. I could, I'll be the first to admit, this has been the longest time between having kids that I've ever experienced. I think it's the most, I was just talking with Moth earlier today. This is the hardest work that I've ever been involved in with, I mean, we forget about the work that we did in the summertime with the Oregon blueprint that we had to create plans for. So, this has been really difficult work, and it's been very taxing and stressing work. I know that, I think the same can be said for, for you board members that are overseeing all this stuff. So, we appreciate all of you. But we're ready to get going with school. I mean, enough's enough. Let's, let's do this thing and let's get started. So, I'm gonna hand this over to Erica. And then I think we can answer some questions if there are after she's done.
Great, thank you. And do you guys have a copy? I had, it was linked, if you got it electronically, but there, if not, you should have a hard copy of the limited in-person piece. Okay. Great, then I'm just gonna go through that. So, the first part really just outlines the guidelines for limited in-person based on what ODE had. what ODE had said, that limited in-person instruction is considered supplemental. So CDL, or Comprehensive Distance Learning, it needs to be the core instruction, so it cannot replace CDL. It also needs to be optional, and it's only for students who meet district-specified criteria, and there needs to be the phasing endpoints. So for us, it would be, families would be notified of that, and we can't make that mandatory for students to receive instruction. When we say "fave," we're usually referring to students who are on IEPs. So then the rest of that are the legal requirements around the cohorts, so 10 students per cohort, they can't be more of two cohorts, and if they receive transportation, transportation is one of those cohorts. Students may only be in the building for two continuous cohorts on any given day, so it cannot be split up. Limited in-person may be provided even if the county in which the district resides is not meeting the metrics. So there are specific, excuse me, metrics related to limited in-person. It's actually, it's different than what would be based for bringing back hybrid. So there are specific, oh, the next part is that we can't do it based on a protected class. So for example, we couldn't say, oh, we're gonna bring back all our ELS, or we're gonna bring back all our special education students. We have to do it based on set criteria. And so when we looked at the spring and how that went, and looked at the guidance that ODE had laid out, we set three priorities for us to get going, and then also some priorities for where we want to go. So our first one is the need to access assessment or evaluations for educational planning. And the original date for that was 10/19, as we talked about at the last board meeting, the need for four weeks of instruction to make sure that we really focus on CDL implementation first before we move forward with limited in-person. You'll see there's an asterisk there at the end, which I believe is on the second page. I would like to push that back one more week, just because of the fires. So then I have a contact in the process for that. Limited in-person priority two would be to address connectivity issues, and we would focus on students with limited or no internet access, even after we have supplied them with updated devices and hotspots. So if the family or the student has demonstrated that there are connectivity issues, there's limited or no internet access, we do know that there are families that just even after we have tried to troubleshoot, they're still having issues that we can be, we can be the hub for that family, and we can schedule time for them so they can access their education. That's the whole point of us supplying devices, is access to education. And then number three, I mean, again, immediately, and this is actually starting right away, maybe this should be moved to number one, if you're doing it based on timeline, would be to provide social, emotional, or mental health support through Trillium Family Services. And that can be, that actually doesn't need to meet the metric, because it's an outside service, which is a little bit confusing. This is already, like I said, it's currently in place, and so it doesn't apply to the limited in-person, she can do it through Zoom or in-person. So that would be the initial proposal after four weeks, and then after four weeks of successful completion of the above plan, which would be no COVID positivity for either staff or students, the additional priorities will be set and implemented. At this time, the following are priorities for the Mount Angel School District for limited in-person instruction. And I know you can read, but we have people online who may not have access to this. So high school students who are at risk to not graduate and are credit deficient, students who received an incomplete in the spring and need to, and need support to move that to a passing grade, students who were not engaged in the spring, so for example, we had students who we could not find, so that's what we mean by not engaged. And students who require direct instruction in what we call student-type behaviors, so like what does it mean to be a student? We have students who need help with functional routines, how to sit in a chair, how to enter a school, how to walk in a hall, arrival/departure type routines, behavior self-management instruction that is specific to the school environment, that cannot be taught in a digital world, and providing academic support specifically in the area of early literacy. So, that is what I have for you in the area of limited in-person instruction. So I obviously would take questions in this, or anything else. All of the administrators are here if you have questions on the rest of the report, or limited in-person instruction.
Who has questions? Great.
I have one. So how would you handle the transportation with these two continuous hour guidelines? How do you, how do you see that happening, getting the kids back and forth?
Yeah, so there's, we would handle it just like we would special transportation. And if they need it to access education, then we provide it, just like I do for students who are on IEPs. And so that's gonna, it's outlined in the Ready School Safe Learners, and there's guidance specific to that. And so we would just have to develop a transportation plan, just like we would with anything else, and our transportation department will probably go from not very busy to very busy.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be one bus going around picking up 10 kids. It's like a van, you wanna pick up one or two kids.
Yeah, there's.
That would not be a change in practice.
Yeah, and there's distancing guidance and sanitizing guidance specific to transportation in the guidance.
Thank you, and John has a question?
My question is, I thought I understood here that there are students that were not contacted during spring. However, I thought I understood throughout the reports last year that all the students had been contacted. What, what am I missing?
So there, yeah, no, that's a great question. So for example, we have some students who we were having a really hard time getting in touch with, I'm thinking especially at the secondary level, who were working, and especially students who maybe were migrant students, who were maybe not engaged in schoolwork. So we knew where they were, but they weren't engaging in schoolwork. And because the differences between spring and the fall were very, were very different, and we do have, we have a lot of families where their choice, especially when we have students who get into their teen years, the choice between providing for my family and doing schoolwork when we're in the distance world is very real, and so, you know, when they're not required to be in-person in a building, they are choosing to be out in the field working, and that is a reality for a lot of our families. And so it's how can we bridge that gap and partner with them, and find a way to make this work for them? So we can reach them, we know where they're at, but are they engaged in learning in a way that works for all families?
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is Rod, I had a couple of questions.
Yes, Rod.
Hey, are you guys, are you guys ready to go with this stuff? And, and maybe this is for Troy as well, you had like a first possible date of October something, I just wonder how that, how those dates fit together?
So the first date was October 19th, I'd like to push it back, I think I had the 26th in there, which would be one more week, because we've pushed school out one more week. The biggest ask is the creation of an assessment center, which is gonna be one at each school. And I am working on, and I'll present it at the next board meeting, I will have an assessment center manual. And so I'm writing that right now, and protocols for that, and that's gonna be the biggest thing. And so that's gonna be for a variety of things, for any assessment that would need to be in-person. It will be primarily ELL and SPED, but it could be any assessment that would need to be done in-person. But obviously, we need space, and we need Plexiglas, and we need all kinds of, we need all kinds of things, right? I need any grants to be involved in that, and I need, I need a manual for that. But thankfully, other districts have done it, and they're willing to share their resources, so that I don't have to write it from scratch.
So what about, what's it take to get beyond doing, and I don't mean to downplay them, but beyond doing assessments and doing curriculum and teaching, you know, in groups of 10 or whatever we're allowed to bring in?
So I think that's where we start, and we see, and that's what you'll see in that second phasing. We see how that goes, and we make sure that nobody gets sick, and that we can do that for a few weeks. And then that's the second part of the phasing in with those bullets at the end. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a while. I, my, my projection there is if we can do it in eight weeks, that we would have all of those pieces listed there.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's an important reminder that this is for supplementary services, so this is above and beyond the regular instruction.
Right.
And we're, we're trying to, the reason we're waiting is we wanna make sure we get the regular instruction right first.
And since it is supplementary, it can't happen during the regular school day, so we're talking about Wednesdays and after-school, Rod. They can't miss like regular, you know what I mean, so like, I mean, I can't be like, hey, do you wanna miss your reading group? And come do, you know what I'm saying, so I'm, it's, you know. We're just trying to maximize what we do have, and do it really thoughtfully and planfully, and make sure that, that nobody gets sick, and we're not just... Otherwise, I mean, sure, they can come at 10 o'clock, but I don't have anybody to teach them, because they're all teaching online.
Okay.
Those are, those are really good questions. I actually kinda miss you guys being on Zoom, because I can only see Rod's face, I can't see anybody else.
It's our gift to you, Erica.
You can see mine!
But you can never see mine. Well, thank you, administrators, and thank you, yeah.
I'll have, I'll have more stuff for you, you know, as we, as we, as we grow it, right? I mean, we're all in this together, so thank you, guys.
And I would also like to acknowledge our administrators have been working extremely hard, they've been working straight through the weekends, late evenings. They've had to make change after change after change, and they're still making changes, because things just keep coming up. But I'm confident that whenever we, whenever we kick it in here at 7:30 on Monday morning, it's gonna, it's gonna be good. Feel good about that. Thank you, guys.
Speaking of working through the weekends, I forgot to say, we will have a website for parents for resources related to all of the tech that Dale did mention. We have been working on that, I was hoping it would be ready to publish today, but we're not quite there, so hope, you know, tomorrow or Wednesday, we will have a website for parents and families, students, for, you know, all the different how-tos, you know, we're talking about different parent trainings. So some of those like asynchronous videos, like, oh, how do I, how do I use Google Classroom? You know, how do I use, how do I do gradebook? How do I do those different things? So we've consolidated that onto a parent website, and so we'll have that available, available to launch.
Great. Thank you. Alright, moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay, I think Jill's gonna pull up the presentation. I got a couple little updates since I've submitted that, but I can talk about those, she's pulling that up. Thank you, Jill. The first, first screen talks about the statewide metrics, give you a quick update. Just came out today for the latest week, which is September 13th is the most recent, at the state level, where 34.8% are cases per 100,000, and then 6.2% for test positivity rate. Marion County, which is the ditch in the state, I guess you could say, who will probably be the last to meet the metrics, which just happens to be on the outskirts of that, unfortunately. There are 57.8% and 11% test positivity. You can see that it's kind of volatile, it's kind of bounces up and down, really not a real consistent pattern, which also makes it difficult to try to do any predictions or second guess it. And then just as a reminder, talking about that metric that we're trying to meet, and this is the exceptions. We know we're a long ways from the, from the case, 10 cases per 100,000, but our first benchmark will be reaching that 30 cases per 100,000 in a three-week period of time. And the 5% test positivity, this will, this would allow us to bring back a potential K through three kids. And as our plan right now, we're, we're confident we can get our K2 kids, we're not sure if we can get K3 yet, under certain tests, but we're still working on that. District enrollment as of 9/15. These have changed a little bit, but just gave you an idea of where we were at that time. And our, our office managers and counselors have been calling families that are not currently enrolled. From what I'm hearing from the administrators, they're fairly confident that we will get our enrollment, where we will get the rest of our kids accounted for. It's just that because of the late start to school, people are just waiting till the last minute, and then evidently, it doesn't matter when school starts, they still wanna wait till the last minute. So they're still making calls, they're getting, they got a lot of registrations today, I know, but we feel pretty good about that process. Homeschool numbers, this are the current numbers as of what we reported last Friday to the ESD, and seeing probably similar trends really across the 21 schools that we see data for within our ESD region. You're seeing, you are seeing some increase, which we knew was gonna happen. And this compares last fall to this fall, it's pretty much doubled, you will. Public online charter, this is a, this is interesting data to try to follow, because, because what we will give is, every charter is different. Some charters will send you a notice, or a parent will actually send you a notice saying, I intend to enroll in this specific charter school. They're not officially approved until they've actually, you know, done the record, enrolled and done the record request. So numbers are kind of mixed here, and, and so when we say not approved, that means we know that they're interested in or considering charter school, but we don't have the official registration or request for records yet. And so that's what we're looking at here. If we, and we have a cap, so public charter schools can only, you can only, or you have the option to only allow 3% of your total enrollment to enroll in a public online charter school. So in our district, that could be somewhere between 17 and 21, depending if you use our current enrollment or the enrollment we anticipate having next week. So that's why that's a range of 17 to 21. And so we've essentially reached our cap. And so once we, once we start getting those approved notices as they come in, once we reach that, 21 will be, of course, the top, then we will, we will start denying those online requests. Substitutes, you know, the questions continue to come up about allowing teachers to, or the number of teachers that are taking emergency leave following the COVID guidance, and so here's what we have so far, that, and at the grade level, but we have each of our substitutes, one in second, one in third, we have a half of, halftime sub that we'll be supporting for elementary grades. And then for six through 12, we have one sub as well, so for a total of 3.5 subs that will start. And again, that's for that first 12 weeks of instruction, essentially through the end of December.
So Troy, six teachers approved for leave, only needing 3.5 subs, you're shifting.
We're shifting.
Shifting.
Making competition with them. Calendar changes, so we've, with, as you know, with the five additional days that we moved a week back, and our teachers lost a week's prep time, so we allowed for that to continue, and we definitely needed it. But there's several things that are impacting the calendar. To start with, you know, there's a lot of information swirling around there, especially with the districts that, you know, were. especially with the districts that, you know, were devastated like, you know, Estacada and up the canyon and, and down south with Phoenix talent. You know, they're gonna lose a lot more days. And so there's a waiver process to go through with the state of Oregon to allow you to, you know, demonstrate how you're gonna try to make up as many days as you can, but not have to adhere to the instructional hours that are required in Division 22. And we could technically apply for those five days that we lost as well. But right now, our intent is to add those back as student contact days. I could wonder, try to make up as many days as we can. And as you know, the current calendar that you approved has five days, four days, I think, at the end of the year for what we used to call snow days or inclement weather. And we haven't started school yet, so I'm really happy to.
I'm not trying to name those days.
Really happy to use those. So I'm, I'm sharing with the board some thoughts. But I'm not really, I'm not ready for the board to approve it yet, but I'm gonna ask for some flexibility as we go through this. So we lost five student contact days. We want to add, or we actually lost five teacher prep days, but we're gonna want to add them back as student contact days. And one of those days would be returning back from winter break. In our current calendar, we have schools starting on January 5th, Tuesday, January 5th. We're talking about coming back on the fourth, that Monday.
Hi, I'm outside the window. Sorry to bother you and talk to you through a window, but I have an Amazon delivery and I don't know if I should.
Can you just drop it by the door?
Can you drop it by this door over here?
Uh, in the.
Right this next door.
Okay.
Okay, we had a delivery now, okay, sorry about you.
The others are removing days from parent-teacher conferences. The con, the process that our administrators are, are gonna be taking our teachers through in the next few days with the home, virtual home visits, we're looking at doing a similar process for parent-teacher conferences. And so we don't, we don't see the need for the, the parent-teacher conference days, if you will. And so we could add back during conferences as well.
Like that week before Thanksgiving that the parents should ask.
So as you know, our current process, our current structure is that we have, we have two 12-hour days. Kids are, kids are in classroom on the first day and then teachers do four hours of conferences at night. And then the next day is a 12-hour day that's just conferencing. And then the third day is a comp day. So it's a, it's a contract day, but teachers are off. And so we're looking at adding back, taking away those, those conference days to make them contact days to make up for, for some of these. And then, and then one of the options also would be to add a couple of days at the end of the year. We only take one of each of those parent conference days. And then the most important thing right now is because of the late start, our teachers are in the process of, as you heard earlier, doing their, their, standard revisions to where they can focus on the most important criteria that they need to focus on. And we need to balance our quarters. So we need to run the grading period, if you will, out and make a balance to where we don't have a first quarter that's gonna be 19 days and then the following quarter is gonna be 43. So what I'm asking the board for is without adopting a new calendar, allowing me to go ahead and change those grading dates to spread them out across the year so that we can have those in the, in the masters, in the student information system before the first day of school. And then I'll bring back the recommendation next month for adopting the new calendar. And then MTA will also have time to consult through that process as well.
Do we have concerns about that approach?
Or it'll still reapproved or approved, the revised.
I'm seeing nods, nodding of heads.
Yeah, as long as the teachers are okay with it, it sounds fine.
Yeah, I've already, I've already talked with them and they do want to get input from their staff. So, and I didn't want to push them. We met last Thursday, so I didn't want to turn it around in two days.
Yeah.
And of course, I'd hate to use up those days at the end of the year at this point because we just don't know what's ahead and there's still, there's still earthquakes and.
We got a blizzard coming.
Whatever it is, it's coming.
Well, and Troy, I just wanna say, for, I for one appreciate the approach of making up the days, even though we could apply for a winter. I like the approach of getting the kids back in and having a full school year for them.
Going to get as much, as much time as we can.
Yeah. So thank you.
This one's kind of a bit of a surprise, a good surprise. You know, I've, I've shared with staff through our meetings in the last month or five weeks that, you know, we've been reaching out to YMCA and reaching out to YMCA and we've actually been reaching out for a couple of months. And then all of a sudden, you guys might have met with them last week and all of a sudden we have a decision that they are ready to go. So YMCA wants to use our old gym. They want to start Monday, 7:30 to 5:30 Monday through Friday, public registrations. I believe, we don't have all the details, this literally is just coming out each day. A full day cost is 125 per week and a half day cost is 85 dollars per week for registration. We don't know the ages yet and we don't know the capacity or the scope, how many, how many folks they can, they can bring in. But we're scrambling because the restroom situation over there wasn't, wasn't the best. So we have John Smith has come back to help us and our former maintenance director and Grant's working with some of our classified folks this week. They're helping clean, paint and get that place ready.
Is it, is it allowable to have district employees have first dibs on the spaces? Or do you know how that works?
No.
First come, first served, maybe?
It's first come, first served.
How was that agreement with them? Is that like at least a rent through this stuff?
It's just a facility use. It's, they, we've had them in St. Mary's in previous years. They've used facilities as well, but they've used the inside facilities, the gym and other spaces after school.
So they start one of those facility use forms.
Yeah. Yeah. And then of course, they have to comply with all of, all the COVID pieces for outside activities as well. Little looser than our guidance, but we'll get it. They'll have to, you know, that stairway there is not the best, but they're fixing it up and it'll, it'll be functional and we'll have a cordoned off at the bottom to where they don't, to where they're limited to just go downstairs for the restroom use. Anyway, so that's, that's what, we're pretty excited about that. So and again, soon as we have the, the ages and the, the number of students it's available for, we'll be sharing that as well.
The sharing will be done on the site or?
Yeah, yeah, we just got the flyer at 5 o'clock this afternoon. So, so we'll be sending it, sending it out to all families and having it posted on our website as well.
Hey Troy, this is Rod. I, I know with other groups, we had, we had talked about not letting other outside groups use the facilities because of COVID concerns and what our liabilities would be. Are we okay with that with these guys?
Well, it's, it's the only, it would be the only use of that facility because there's no other use at this time. So it's completely separate. They wouldn't be coming into our building at all. So I'm comfortable with it. If the board wants to discuss that, they can, they can certainly do that. But I don't see any, any, the, you know, risk with any of the activities that are going on in our main buildings.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just, it's just, it's different than what we had talked about, I think, at the last board meeting.
Yeah, the other, I interpreted that the previous discussion about facility use had to do with using those common spaces that we're also gonna be instructing in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is the insurance piece going to play through on that building with this?
Well, there's no, they're insured as well, but, but they're not insured for communicable diseases either.
Yeah, we were, they, they, they're not getting any insurance from us.
No, they're still, they have the same coverage as, as any other entity that would use our facilities.
Good.
Yeah, and that's in our facility use.
So, oh, oh, thank you, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Yeah. Technology access. You asked me earlier about, you know, not getting gray hair. I think Scott May is the one that probably should be asking if his technology requests that he gets every day. And, and I think he's, you know, he's about to pull it out because of the canvas issue, but it really has, he has no control. And as soon as we get access, he will have us hooked up as quick as he can. But today and tomorrow, all three buildings are distributing our Chromebooks. Hopefully by the end of the week, all students will have one in their home and all, all families will have access to learn it online by the end of the week if we accomplish our goals. And we have KJ's hotspots. We, Jervis School District purchased too many. And so we were able to purchase directly from them. And then we have a contract with Verizon that's helping us get those hooked up. We hope to get those hooked up by the end of the week and get them out to families with instructions on how to, how to hook up to them. And like I said, we had 49 students currently on our list. I think there were a few more added today and we're distributing those by need. So if we have families that aren't connected, they are, they are our first priority. And then your packet, there's also a summer list from, from Grant Anderson, our maintenance director, of a long list of things that he, that he's worked with his staff over the summer, our custodial staff. One of those groups that never missed a day. They've continued to go work through all these conditions. I'm not gonna go through, read all of them, but there are five of them I would like to highlight that are kind of the big items. One of those is the middle school boiler. It was a level of corrosion that exceeded the, more than one layer of that, of that boiler that is, has been quite a challenge. And they've got it temporarily fixed, but they're gonna have to come back in and redo another layer. I believe they're gonna have to take off the burner and crawl inside to be prepared before the cold weather hits. Of course, I've shared this, all HVAC filters have been upgraded from a MERV 7 to a MERV 13, which is particle size restriction, if you will, what particle size. So 13 is what was considered hospital grade, not operating room grade, but hospital grade. So your general foyer and, and, and general kind of spaces. And they're getting those all switched out. And then for those of you who've been on the board a while, you remember the dry pipe fire system in St. Mary's? I know that Doug was, Doug was heavily involved in this. But we have a dry pipe fire system that there's corrosion inside of the pipe. And I can't remember how many years ago, but we put in a a pump, I didn't write it down, like a nitrous type pump that is supposed to slow down the corrosion inside those pipes. And just to, we just finished our five-year inspection, full thorough inspection and it's, it's continuing to corrode at a very fast rate. So we're getting another full evaluation. As you know, we have the TAP grants that we're, we're getting started on and that will help us with the whole thorough assessment by engineers and those folks who have a lot better technical understanding. But we anticipate that being a major, major budget item in the near future. Because those, what happens is those, if those dry pipes leak, air or the pressure drops inside of those pipes, then they fill with water. Then we have flooding, we have major issues. So we'll be, that is a top priority for our maintenance department. The, the big black walnut tree out behind here, someone maybe have noticed the bark had been falling off of it for a couple of years. And so we had a full assessment by our arborist and botanist of Oregon State University coming to look at it and it's, it's dying. So we're in the process of having it removed. It's kind of a landmark out there. It's gonna be sad to see it go, but the, if you, you see the limbs, they all go right over the top of buildings and, and it's, it's unfortunately very close to rotting. So we think, well, we know that we can get it removed for the cost of the tree. So there will be no cost to move it to the district. And those who are, were getting bids because it's very popular, I guess, black walnut is very popular.
People want the wood.
They want the wood, yeah. So they're gonna, you know, they'll have to use arborists, licensed arborists to get, take it down or license a tree company to take it down. They promised, each of the bidders have promised us to provide slabs, some slabs so that our wood shop could put, put together some conference tables or something as a momentum of that old, old black walnut tree. So we don't have a timeline on that yet because we spent a lot of time with the assessment process. But it doesn't look good. And then the last highlight that I wanted to mention was the TAP grants again. Those are out, they're being, the process of being designed by HMK Company. Data Bucay goes through our bond projects with our project manager. And we expect to hear back from him soon. We're getting, getting those processes started probably in October, getting committees together. You may have heard, we had to make some reductions, made some reductions in our transportation department because of the current structure of our, of our teaching and learning. We've reduced two 20-hour bus drivers and laid off two 20-hour bus drivers and a 10-hour van driver. And then we've reduced our transportation director from 40 hours to 30 hours per week.
So how many bus drivers will be still back then?
Four.
Oh, okay.
Counting, if you can count, so, okay, count our transportation director. And, and so then we set up plenty of folks to deliver our meals with some extra time. So, and then of course, we, we want these folks back whenever, whenever we're able to return to instruction. So we're hopeful that they'll still be around, but all great people. It was, it's a hard process, but it's the reality of our situation right now. All students belong. This is a, a new Division 22 law that was put in to temporary rule last week, I believe Thursday or Friday. And, and we will be giving sample policy by the end of the week. And so this is, this is an interesting new law that is, is gonna be setting a trend, I think, across the US. The first date the US to adopt hate symbol legislation. So, and, or hate symbol, public education law. And this was just one piece taken out of it. In your packet is a copy of the OARs to read. But basically it's, it's prohibiting any hate crime symbols that might be used in our, in our schools, on our, on our properties. So how do we, how do we, you know, manage that process? How do we enforce it? There's a lot more guidance to come, but we think it's a great opportunity for us to, you know, keep our, keep our students and staff safe. And so we're looking forward to how we can, we can, you know, hold everyone to those standards. Again, brand new and it's, I think, it just happened to come out, it happened to be approved the same day as the president's 1716 Commission project. And I don't know the details on it, but it's, it's interesting how all these new laws are coming about, about how we teach, you know, patriotism and the history around it. So very exciting stuff. That's all I had for my, my report. Any questions?
Questions and comments? Board member reports, do any of us have a report? Will they go to the order? Great, moving on. We are at the public forum stage and I would ask Jill if we have anybody signed up to address the board.
Sherry, I don't have any names and addresses submitted yet through public forum.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for, oh, let's have an uncomfortable 30-second silence to allow for anybody to sign up at this point and then we're gonna move on. Okay, that was my internal 30-second clock. So Jill, nobody signed in?
Nothing new.
Okay, all right, moving on to action items. Okay, all right, moving on to action items, which are next. Discussion items, sports activities calendar. So that has me as the chair leading that. So Troy, what, what's up?
That, that was just for follow-up discussion to, to, for the board to discuss the presentation from Kevin. And any, any concerns about moving forward with the current plan?
Does anybody have concerns or comments about?
Yeah, I, I have a few thoughts on it. Probably won't make me the most popular guy in town, but we're, we're, we're gonna open sports for less than ten percent of our, of our student population. And there's very little sign, and I'll talk to this a little bit more in the next section of the meeting, that we're gonna have any in-person instruction for any kids throughout the first semester. And I think by doing this, we're putting sports far ahead of education. And it honestly has no business being there. So that's my thoughts on it. I know it's not a popular view, but I'm putting that view out there. And, and I won't be, I don't know if we're taking action on it or not, but I will not be supporting opening sports at this time.
Okay, thank you, Rod. Does anybody else have any comments? I personally, my opinion hasn't changed since our work session, which we, it's a tough one. And weighing the risk, weighing the need for kids to start doing something that is more connection, weighing the equity piece. It's hard, and I am still in favor of moving ahead with the, with the sports piece for a number of reasons. One, it seems really well designed and laid out. And two, we have interest from, you know, the coaches and the, and the kids to start doing something. And three, I'm hoping this can be a template for other activities moving forward. And I, in my personal, as one board member opinion, starting something now will be good knowing that it's not serving everyone in exactly the same way. That's just my personal opinion as, as one board member. Anybody else have any comments or?
I'm really, I mean, I think Mo's got the safety stuff. I'm not too worried about the safety stuff, at least for the outdoor stuff. I mean, I, he's got it pretty well thought through, and I think the coaches have it, have it pretty well thought, thought through. I'm, I'm far more concerned about the, you know, the, we've got seven hundred and thirty-nine kids in our district right now. And we're gonna have fifty kids in spring sports that start next week. And no option available for the other six hundred and eighty or six hundred and eighty-nine kids in our district. And I just, from an equity perspective, that's, from an active equity perspective, it's a horrible thing to do. And from a putting sports in front of education, it's a, it's a horrible thing to do. So that's, I don't know, that's my thoughts on it.
So it's better to, it's better to do nothing at all than to do something?
No, we've, we've, we've actively chosen to do this instead of other things. So, so no, it's not a, it's not a, it's, it's not do this or do nothing. It's do this or do something else. Right? There's, there's certainly opportunities on the table to bring kids in for education, just as well as there's opportunities for bringing kids in for sports. We've just chosen as a school board prioritize sports over education, and I'm not willing to do that.
I would just like to clarify one thing, and that is that the limited in-person instruction, if that's where you're referring to, whether we have sports participating or not, we would not start it any sooner than we, when then we have scheduled in October. I just want to clarify that. It's not, sports are not keeping us from doing any other activities.
And it's my understanding that right now, we don't think that the sports participation will count towards that two hundred and fifty.
Fifty percent of the opinions go one way or the other, depending on who you talk to. But I would say that the participation in sports activities does not count against the quota for limited in-person instruction activities.
I'm sorry to say, are any of the board members opposed to the plan of starting the sports activities as presented tonight?
No, I support. I don't feel like we're choosing one thing over another. I think we're just providing another opportunity.
That's correct. That's what I wanted to say.
I do oppose it.
Yeah, thank you, Rod. Yes.
And Rod, I won't, I won't completely disagree with you either. The philosophy behind it from the state and OISA level, I don't agree with it at all. I don't think the party was right, but I also agree with John. If there is an opportunity, take advantage of it because there's no other way to get kids involved at that level. Is it equitable? It's equitable in a sense that anybody can do it, but it's only a certain group of kids that will choose to do it. And so you're right, we, we take what we can get at this point. Because, you know, if we truly are gonna be a long time out, we are seriously concerned about the mental health of our kids. And, you know, this is only reaching a small group of them, but at least it's a few.
But potentially it could expand to clubs or those kind of things?
Good. I think the, the way information and stuff changes nowadays, it's hard to predict how fast, about five days. But yeah, that would be awesome if we could eventually.
So it's just a matter of getting.
We're gonna get the starts from the governor's office. Yeah, that's why we're, that's why we're working on CDL instruction first. And then after we get a three or four weeks under about them, we'll start figuring out how we can work in those, those limited in-person groups on the side.
So any other comments or discuss on that one? Thank you. Nine point two district plan for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. So let Troy kick it off. And then Rod, you have the information you wanted to share at this piece of the meeting. And the information that you sent in is going to be part of our minutes, but it just didn't get inherent time to share it live during our, during our meeting. The board members have the copies of your slides in front of us, so.
And I don't have much, a lot more to share what I had in there until I seen it was in the administrative reports was the limited in-person guidance that, that Eric was sharing. So I don't have any further information there unless the board has a need to discuss further. Mostly the information that was shared by the administrators, which was, which is the main papers of what's happening.
And Rod, as you're talking, I would just, one, one observation is that some of the information that you have in your content is similar to what Troy has talked about, so you can.
Yeah, it's from the same data. It's, I mean, that's the exact page that I get my information from. So I just, I want, so I wanted to explain a little bit about, and it really has to do with why my position on sports. And I realized we're done with that, but why that position has changed. And it really has to do with the, the likelihood or lack of likelihood that we're gonna have any kids or any in-person instruction, other than the, the stuff we're just talking about. But for any of our hybrid model instruction, it's pretty unlikely based on the data that, that the state is giving us that we're going to make it there. There's, there's two metrics for the county, and, and these are in the slides. And you can, anybody online can, can get them after, or tomorrow, I guess. But essentially, there's two metrics that each county must meet to be able to open in-person instruction. One is a, is a positivity rate of the virus, and one is an occurrence rate of the virus within, within your county. Marion County has not been anywhere close to meeting the metrics on, for either of those metrics since the time that the lockdown ended in June. From that time on, we've been on a, on a poor trajectory, I'll call it, where there's very little likelihood that we'll be able to do in-person instruction on the November timeline that, that we're shooting for right now. And I believe almost no possibility that we'll have kids in the classroom before the first of the year. So with that in mind, to me, that's where the huge inequity comes in the, in the sports piece of it. In that, that may be the only in-person time that any kid in our district gets the entire semester. So I think as, as we sit down and make decisions as a board, or as an administration, or teachers, or parents, then that reality that we're probably not gonna have kids in school for our hybrid model until after the first of the year, I think really needs to start sinking in for people because that's a big deal that we're really not talking about yet. That's all I have to say.
Rod, a quick follow-up that we have, as an administrative team, we have taken that same approach. That's, I think that's why we asked to start with, for so much prep time, so we would get it right. And then we had change after change after change to our master schedules and instructional models because we knew that we were in it for the long haul, and we did not want to sell our kids short. And so I think our, our master schedules reflect that long-term commitment, you know, to having kids out for longer than, than we probably want. Obviously more than we want, but longer than we expect. And if we get the opportunity to go back and forth between models, we think our plan is fluid enough that kids won't have to, to make any major changes when they come back into our building or potentially go back out because of a quarantine.
Yeah, right. I'm not, I don't mean to, to try to throw you under the bus or anything about the, about the November ninth date or whatever it is that we're targeting, because when that date was laid down, I mean, that was, you know, a reasonable, optimistic, you know, target. So I have no, I have no problem with that. It's just as we, you know, as a board or as parents, whatever, you know, we need to have that. That's, that's the prob, most probable reality is that we're not gonna have kids back in, in twenty twenty.
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers are not trending the way we were hoping they were gonna trend. That's for sure.
Yeah, and as a reminder, the original purpose for selecting November ninth, because that was the original end of the first quarter. And we just wanted to be on a break of a, of a, you know, break, a period of time that was manageable. So, yeah, we don't know.
We'll know that a quarter will change.
Yeah, yeah. And to predict right now, you know, it's, it's, even the best statisticians, analysts have a hard time predicting that.
Thank you, Rod. Good information. Does anybody have any questions or comments on Troy or Rod's stuff? All right, moving on to interim bargaining with Manangel Teachers Association.
So we met earlier, and I just wanted to share with the board publicly what the items that are being requested to bargain because of the situation we're in. And we met, like the board note, we met last week in our first session of bargaining and a two-hour session. And we had the MTA presented each of the items and explained their, their intent behind, behind each of the items. And then they have since sent one item revision to us. And then we are in the process of developing a counterproposal that we will present to them when we meet for the second time on Wednesday, midday on Wednesday. And so started the process. And as a reminder, you know, the demands of bargaining are because of potential changes in our current contract as a result of the crises that we're, we're currently in. But I'll read through it so that those who are with us publicly can hear. Manangel Teacher Association and School District have agreed to the following contract modifications. That's in the, in the proposal. The parties agreed to the following. For the duration of a state of emergency due to the pandemic such as COVID nineteen, in addition to the following requirements as set out by ODE, OHA, AOSHA, and CDC, for having buildings open during the school year, the district shall. Number one, include union leadership in monitoring and adjusting the ODE required operational blueprint for reentry and responding to unanticipated developments at least monthly. Number two, provide appropriate workplace provisions of PPE, which will include hand washing stations, hand sanitizers, sanitizing wipes, and other cleaning materials. Provide face coverings daily or face shields for professional educators on site. Educators request gloves, booties, gowns, full-body suits shall be provided daily for educators who are required to be in close contact with students. At the educator's request, additional classroom plexiglass-type barriers shall be made available at no cost to the educator. In cases where a medical condition or disability prevents wearing a mask covering, accommodations will be made. Number three, working the learning spaces. Working and learning spaces must provide at least thirty-five square feet per person and windows that open to the outside and/or HEPA fan filter systems. Number four, provide professional educators flexibility in work schedules and assignments as mutually agree upon by educator and building principal. Professional educators may voluntarily establish flexible work hours outside of the regular workday to accommodate working with parents, other district staff, and home obligations, including childcare responsibilities. Number five, professional educators who are high-risk for COVID nineteen infection or who live in, who live with people at high risk are permitted to work remotely and have no contact duties. Number six, professional educators may bring and supervise their own school and children within their classroom or office. Number seven, access to training substitutes for professional educators who need to access leave. If the substitute, excuse me, if the substitute is a current member, the workload of the individual will be reduced proportionally. If the district, number eight, if the district decides to offer limited in-person instruction during comprehensive distance learning, professional educators who will be providing the instruction will be volunteers first. Number nine, keep professional educator salary and benefits whole for any employee on COVID-related leave. COVID nineteen leave will not be subtracted from the educator's accrued leaves. The sixth, number ten, the sick bank will be modified for professional educators to use after COVID nineteen leave is exhausted and before the Oregon Family Leave Act is used, or if the OFLA does not apply. Members can donate up to eight days to the bank. Number eleven, video recordings may be used for the purpose of providing distance learning instruction and maintaining staff and student safety only. Cannot be used for evaluation purposes unless a recording is agreed upon by the professional educator. Number twelve, the district and association agreed to suspend the evaluation cycle for both contract and probationary educators. Until a return to in-person education is able to resume, any misassigned areas will not be a part of the evaluation process. Professional educators, number thirteen, who are working less than one FTE will be prorated for the amount of professional development or professional planning time based on the professional educator's percentage of full-time work. In the event of the professional educator perceives an inequitable distribution of workload for their FTE, a review committee consisting of a media supervisor and an association representative will review the workload and resolve the situation. Number fourteen, when the district is considering an involuntary transfer to a misassignment to fill an open position, they shall consider the TSPC satisfactory steps in totality. Any volunteers shall be placed before involuntary transfers into a misassignment. At the request of a professional educator, a peer mentor shall be assigned. The mentor and the mentee shall be compensated at their per diem rate for up to eight hours per month. Long-winded, but those are the items that were presented that John and I are, are on the bargaining video as well as Gil Schmidt, our business manager. And we're working through that process, and we'll meet with them, like I say, again, Wednesday.
Thank you. And last item, board's policy impacted by COVID nineteen. So it was, the question was raised, are there any policies in existence that are challenging to comply with right now because of this extraordinary world we're in? And is it the responsibility of the board to look at providing more guidance to you and making decisions in certain policy or in coming up with an interim policy because of the crisis? And in particular, the facilities use policy is the one that has been addressed as maybe, you know, how are we dealing with that as written? Are we still, is it still working? Is it, you know, doing what it needs to do? Is the authority of the board being respected with, you know, decisions on that? So what do you think? Is it, you know, doing what it needs to do? Is the authority of the board being respected with, you know, decisions on that? So, what do you think?
Well, first thing, I just realized you asked me about facilities. That is, I did not pull that one up, so, um, I can address it a little bit here. So the, the policies I pulled up are the, the, obviously the COVID or the emergency leave, uh, policy, which is brand new, uh, and, you know, it's not, I mean, policy always seems to you, until you're applying policy, you don't really understand where the holes are, where the gray areas are. We know that we need timelines in here, more hard timelines, um, but we've, I think we've done pretty well with the folks that have applied for us so far. So that is definitely new, um, and we're, we've got new ARs for it, and as far as I know, it's, it's working well for the situation we're in. Communicable disease, uh, GBEB, uh, again, really, with the guidance that we've received from OHJ and, and ODE, it really, it really goes above and beyond this policy. So by having to comply with their guidance, it's, uh, more than meeting the needs of our, our policy. License requirements, uh, in the, uh, in the demand for bargaining items, you heard, uh, reference to this. And that has to do with TSPC provided opportunity to waive licensure endorsements. If you're in an emergency situation where you are not able to fill it with other staff, you can, you can, uh, allow staff to teach outside of their, um, their licensure or endorsement, endorsement areas more than they have in the past. Prior to the situation, um, districts have always been able to allow a teacher to teach up to ten hours per week, which is basically two periods, uh, if you will, outside of their licensure area without any, uh, without any conflict or, or, uh, problems with your licensure. Uh, and now, uh, there are districts that are going way beyond that, of course, because of, because of the limits with the cohorting and training together schedules. So, uh, we're still in compliance with those, those pieces, but we do have some folks teaching, not necessarily out of their licensure as much, but they've been licensed in those areas, but they haven't taught them for a while. So, and they don't feel qualified, but, um, we're working with each of those individuals. And then GCN, GDN, which is our evaluation of staff, uh, again, uh, you heard in the proposal, um, from MTA, they're wanting to, to, um, suspend that process, but their proposal was prior to the guidance being released by the state of Oregon, uh, for evaluation for this year. And, uh, the only thing that really changes, um, is the end of the year rating system. So we're, we're still required by law to evaluate, just as we have in the past. The only change is at the end of the year, when you're having your summative meeting, uh, you don't have to put a rating on that, and you do not have to report it to the state of Oregon. Parts facilities, and I apologize, Sherry, for not having enough facilities in there. We have not approved any facility use, um, so far, and we haven't, we don't have any requests. No facilities for our current buildings, uh, and so.
So buildings where you have staff or, and Sherry?
Correct. And the reason, and one of the major reasons is, we're, we're not comfortable with having to, to clean and, and, uh, and take care of those facilities, and because of the demands for our daytime crews, to have to, if we have evening events where folks come in or weekends, that's, that's another level of, of care that we're just not prepared to, to do at this time. We'll, we'll address them as we begin to get, we begin to get, uh, facility use applications, but we don't have this time. So we're, we're not, we're not, um, considering opening it up anytime soon.
So do you feel like it's good as it is?
Yeah, I mean, if we get a high demand, or, and, or more pressure to use our facilities for some, for some reason, then we may have to reconsider, but I know, you know, we've had, uh, Bible church, it, it, they were up at high school, and I think they're down St. Mary's last, and, uh, they've indicated that they're, they're not, they're too big now, so they're not coming back. Yeah, they were at the Advent Center. I think that they, I think their agreement there was coming due in September, but, uh, I don't, they don't intend to come back.
So have we got any facilities use, uh, requests submitted with the office? We haven't wanted to deny it.
No, so your plan, your plan is still to stay on case-by-case basis?
Case-by-case, but we're, we're trying to avoid any situations where we have that, you know, that increase in risk for spreading disease.
We want to just kind of, do people just kind of know we're closed, and they're not applying?
Correct. Yeah, well, I don't, I don't think that outside entities are even wanting to come in. I mean, I think there's still that risk out there that, you know, they're staying put too. So, there'll be a time when we have to address it, but we haven't had to yet.
Or now, it's okay. Any other?
So, so these ones that you have here, Troy, are you just showing this to us, or there's something that we're gonna need to throw down next?
I wouldn't, no, I was just asked to, to address, I can't remember, for Sherry or someone?
If, if there are policies that you think COVID has kind of, like, did, do we need to update, do we need to, do any interim?
Just wanted to review those who are, have been impacted, but, um, let the board know that we're okay with it at this point. If we do get in the, to the level where we have policy that is gonna have to be changed to meet our current situation, then we'll have to address that quickly. But as far as I know so far, we're okay. The Division twenty-two standards, um, it's a new process. It used to be a February report, now it's a, a November report. So you will actually get that in October this year, and, uh, and it's because I have to report by November. So I don't know if you remember that I showed you, we gave you the long, long list and showed you what we'd met, what we haven't met, and what we haven't met.
Key at the middle school.
Library at the high school. Oh, yeah, there's a couple of things we're still working on. Uh, the big one is our, our, comprehensive counseling framework that our councils are working on. That one's been out for a couple of years, so.
Is it the really challenging one gonna be, is school gonna be kicked off before this report is due?
Yeah, that is. So, now we'll, we'll continue to monitor policy as we, as we move forward with, uh, the things that keep popping up for us.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that one? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and, sure. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. Good night.